Good morning. It is eight thirty-three on September eleventh, calling the Public Safety Commission's September meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Dismaris is absent. Commissioner Munoz?
President.
Commissioner Cervantes is absent. Commissioner G?
Here.
Commissioner Alseroff is absent. Vice Chair Watson?
Here.
And Chair Donnelly?
Here. Welcome, everyone. We may have Commissioner Cervantes joining us. We haven't heard from him, but until then, we have a quorum and we'll move forward. Councilmember Caciari is not here yet either, so why don't we jump ahead? Do we have any public comment this morning?
We have no public comment this morning.
Okay. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Has anybody had a chance to look at them and have any edits or notes?
I was just reading the minutes right now. I wanted to know if we addressed the public comment that was made by Ms. LaRose. Last time I wasn't here, so I don't know if it ever got addressed. And I know she's written a few emails to us.
She did also speak at the meeting. So when something is not an agendized item, we aren't allowed to address or discuss it in detail. But any concerns that she has brought up have been viewed by staff.
Was there anything else? Okay. Let's take a roll call. Oh, we need a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
All right. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Munoz? Commissioner G?
I review them.
Thank you. Vice Chair Watson? And Chair Donnelly?
Approved. Great. Minutes approved is submitted. Uh, let's move right on to the next agenda item. Chief Solinsky?
All right. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Public Safety Commission. This morning's report is part of the annual review of the Police Department's military equipment inventory. It also uncovers its use, any complaints related to it, and the policy as required by law pursuant to Assembly Bill four eighty-one. Assembly Bill forty-one was introduced and codified into law on January first, two thousand twenty-two, which requires every law enforcement agency to provide a conclusive overview of each category of military equipment that it has in its inventory, the equipment's designated purpose, utilization or deployments by the agency, and also to give a brief outline of any grievances that have been received throughout the year regarding its its use or deployment, and the outcomes of any internal findings, as well as a comprehensive expense report regarding that equipment, any any encumbrances, any deployments, any reimbursements, those types of things. So today's report, the 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 intent of it is to buy transparency and to give a better, more cohesive understanding for not only this commission, but members of our community, and also allow them an opportunity, as well as yourselves, to ask any questions so that we can, again, provide that better, larger picture and bigger understanding of what, not only what the Police Department has in its inventory, how it's used, but what we may be looking at in the future as as our demographics of our city, as the needs of the city, as crime trends start to change, what that future is going to look like. So on June first, two thousand twenty-two of last year, the City Council approved the Police Department's inventory of military equipment. They also approved an ordinance, which is in your packet twenty-three sixty-five, which which included the, not only the the department's equipment, but also the use policy related to that. And as required by law, the the Police Department is required to present an annual report regarding those issues I just mentioned, and go in front of the 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 governing council to get approval for the following year. And that's what this is intended to be, not only to get a to provide you with an overview, but to get your thoughts on it and then present it to City Council. We're looking at bringing this back to City Council, I believe, on October fourth for our final review and and to go over any issues there. So I'd like to go over first, if we go, for those of you that have it, if you go to your report on page five, is a list of all the Police Department equipment in that that is in our inventory that is listed under military equipment. Now, one thing I think is a little bit of a misnomer is a lot of the things in here aren't directly related to military equipment. I think it's a little bit broad in the sense of what is defined as military equipment. Some of these are munitions or or items that are used on a on a routine basis. And I I will say that there is some pending legislation that is looking to expand the definition of military equipment. So for instance, for the Police Department specifically in South Pasadena, there there are sixteen items. We have two rifles, which are three oh eight caliber. And then we also have a forty-millimeter kinetic energy projectile launcher. The rest of the items are either munitions for those platforms and or distraction or diversionary devices. And I can go into specifics if you have questions on those later. Now, nothing in here has changed from last year. We have not had any deployments. We have not had any any equipment purchases. And we do not intend to purchase any additional equipment this year. Having said that, the the complaints, we we have not received any complaints. We did receive an inquiry from a media company as far as the number of items that we have on hand, as far as the rifles and the and the launching platforms of the forty-millimeter kinetic energy launcher. But other than that, there were no inquiries from the public. We haven't received any complaints as as we haven't had any deployments. So it's it's really very minimal, and this is more procedural in nature. But having said that, because the items are listed here, I'm happy to answer any questions as far as why we have these items, what we're looking to do in the future. I know at the last meeting, Commissioner Cervantes had mentioned the possibility of drones. Drones are considered military equipment. Uh, we are looking at that sometime in the future. So as we as we go into that, we have built in our ordinance that we're allowed to test and evaluate future equipment. But then, once that decision would be made, if we were to make it to to purchase it, we would ultimately bring that back to this body and then, of course, to the City Council for final. So I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any at this point regarding the equipment that we have or its use. Uh, that's an entirely separate, the the drones for fireworks are entirely separate. That's not related to the military equipment policy. Yes, there would be an additional cost for that. Uh, Community Services Department of South Pasadena is doing a their analysis and research on it. They'll bring that back at a at a separate time. Drones for law enforcement, completely different platform. Yes, those those would be an additional cost. As far as the cost for maintaining the equipment we have, no, there there is no additional cost this year. It's an inventory that we already have. We have storage for it. Over time, some of those munitions and distractionary devices would expire. And should we choose to renew them? Yes, there'd be a cost at that time. But for this fiscal year, there is no additional cost. I I do want to bring up, and and this was a question that came up last time, is why does South Pasadena need these items? Couldn't we rely on other law enforcement agencies or other entities to provide those services? And and that's really kind of a complex question in the sense that why we do have mutual aid with several law enforcement agencies. What we're finding more and more is those agencies are less likely to to render aid or assistance just simply for the liability purposes. So for instance, most situations that are they're they're dynamic and they're changing rapidly, and they require an immediate response to get another law enforcement agency out here to assist South Pasadena takes at minimum at least an hour. Uh, by the time we make the call, we get everybody involved that needs to come here, uh, get them equipped and then have them respond. And that's assuming that that agency is going to take that liability and risk and want to come and assist us. For instance, we use Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, their SWAT team, if we need a a SWAT team here, but they have a very strict protocol on what they will and will not come out to. So for instance, if it is a individual that we're serving a search warrant on, that we know has firearms, maybe has a violent history, unless there is an active shooter situation, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department will not come out. So they rely on South Pasadena to take the lead on that. We need, South Pasadena needs that equipment to not only protect our officers, protect our citizens, but to respond appropriately. So that's why we have some of these items in here. These items are not meant uh, for anything other than to bring the incident to a successful and safe conclusion. Obviously, some of these incidents are driven by the suspects themselves and their actions. But these tools that we use, and that's really all they are, they're tools to minimize that that risk to the community and risk to our officers, and to bring the the event to a conclusion as quickly as possible and just safely as possible. So to have these items on hand really helps the law enforcement community, helps the 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 citizens in general, just to to minimize that and bring it to a faster conclusion. So um, the other thing we we do is we have mutual aid on a regional level, which we're part of Area C, so the Los Angeles County is broken up into multiple areas. San Gabriel Valley from Burbank all the way to Monobello, and then over to San Marino is all Area C for the law enforcement region. We share resources. We do have a command and control vehicle that is listed as a military equipment item, but it is not under the control of South Pasadena. That is under the control of Alhambra and Monterey Park. We have access to it. But we don't list it under South Pasadena's military equipment list simply because we don't have control of that. But but we do have access to it. So having said that, there is equipment out there. We can borrow from other agencies, but the reality is when we need something, we need it a little faster. And sometimes it's not always not always available if we're we're constantly relying on other agencies. So that's the same thing, whether it's emergency equipment like this or it's personnel. Uh, we like to work well with others. We we practice, we train, but it's not always there. So it's it's always good when we can to have that equipment in-house.
So Chief, of all the personnel, sworn personnel have been obtained a training for all the equipment? And two, is this post-certified is training? I mean, for the for the sworn personnel?
Thank you, yes. So all this equipment, all but the the three oh eight rifles, and there are two of them, all personnel have been through post-certified training. There's some equipment that is specialized in here, and that would be the distractionary devices and the three rifles, as I mentioned. Those, there's specific personnel that have been through training for those, and they, only those personnel can deploy them with the approval of a supervisor. Uh, the training that we go through, I consider some of the best is not only post-certified, that post is the Peace Officers Standards and Training throughout California. They are the governing body of all law enforcement training. But we also partner with our local and neighboring agencies. So for instance, on those rifle platforms, we've partnered with the Los Angeles Police Department's Metro Division, and they actually provided the training for those three three oh eight rifles. And then it's an annual or continuing training program that those officers would go through. So right now, we haven't had any updated training simply because we haven't deployed those rifles, and then personnel and staffing haven't allowed us to to send the officers to training. But once we get our our staffing complement all the way up, and we have the personnel available, then we'll we'll continue and we'll go back and meet those requirements. But before we would deploy those, we we would ensure that those officers are trained and meet all the minimum standards. Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, Chief. I I was reading through the 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 different stuff that was sent to us to the commissioners regards military equipment and all that. And I understand what he says. But the one thing that has a real bad connotation for people who are not aware of what this whole thing is about is the fact that we use the term military equipment. And people associate that with a war with going against another country or something, something really heavy, heavy duty equipment. And from your explanation, a lot of it makes completely complete sense. However, we need to emphasize for those naysayers that keep saying, oh, we don't want, we don't want to fund the police and this need to be disbanded. We need to emphasize that this military equipment is used only in extreme purposes when it's needed. And furthermore, that ahead of any of that usage, we will go into our approach of trying to solve certain many instances, approaching them with the mental health issue, what you call, resources that we have, rather than by force. And I believe that the points you make, you made are very valid. But there is a misconception there that the public is going to be violently assaulted with this military equipment. And and that is not so. And if you can think back of what happened a few years back in, I forget what it was, but there was these people that went with armor and this the armor equipment plants, they had these rifles and things that the police didn't have. And and they were, the police were totally, totally out armed, outdone by all this. And it could have really helped to have had the the military equipment that you're talking about. But people have short memories, and they need to be refreshed that not only are the cases where the bad guys are making nice or just very mild, but we're talking about when some of these people really mean harm, and they need to be stopped. But I I I agree with what you just said in your presentation. It's all valid. But the misconception needs to be handled in a certain way because just, I don't know, they were military. I, you you think of Vietnam, you think of Iraq, and you think of that sort of thing. Mass massive destruction as opposed to you're talking public safety. So.
And you raise a very, very good point, and I think the the term military equipment is is very misleading. And while there there are some law enforcement applications for military equipment, there's a program called the ten thirty-three program out of the Department of Defense, and that is literally where uh, the Military Department of Defense will give military equipment, armored vehicles, helicopters, those types of things to law enforcement. South Pasadena does not participate in that. We do not have any equipment that has come from that. However, this law specifically related to California, AB forty-one, it defines military equipment very broadly. So as I mentioned, we're talking about drones. There are commercial entities, Amazon, that use drones in their in their everyday business. And that would be considered if it had a law enforcement use as military equipment. We're looking at drones, and and we talked about it at the last Public Safety Commission meeting as a means for assisting fire, locating hotspots in the hillsides of our community, for locating people with a propensity to wander, those with with cognitive issues. So there's a wide range of use for these. So the term military equipment, I think, is is a little misleading as to your point. And as we move forward, as I mentioned, um, there is some pending legislation that's even going to expand the definition of military equipment to include the day-to-day stuff that police officers would typically carry on their utility belts. So I I think you raise a very valid point, and that is something we'll certainly uh, speak about as we move forward, is trying to get that ed- educational component to the community is. But this, these are really tools. We're, this is not a, this is not a war zone. We're not going to war with our community. We're partnering with our community. And it really is to make, uh, to make things safer, not not more dangerous.
Anyone else? So Chief, you're looking for a recommendation for us to send this to City Council for renewal, an annual renewal?
Yes, the staff recommends that that the commission review this and bring a recommendation, and then we will present whatever that recommendation is for renewal to the City Council in October.
Um, can we have a motion to make a recommendation to City Council to renew the policy for this year?
However, I wonder if at all possible, we could use instead of the term military equipment, we could use something else. Surveillance or whatever it is that doesn't imply an invasion. It doesn't imply you know, doing all kinds of harm thing because what it is, is the law enforcement right now is totally outgunned and outmaneuvered by the bad guys. They have, especially the drug traffickers. They have just every resource at their hands. And we, however, if we could come to avoid being labeled as that we are actually going to massacre our own people, we're protecting them. We are actually in the business of working together rather than harming them. So if there would be a possible way where this could be approached, instead of saying military equipment, it could be surveillance equipment or protective equip, I I don't know. I I I I'm not sure of words for this. But the term military equipment is extremely misleading in this case, I think. And on something that is so badly needed by the police.
Commissioner Cervantes, I I truly appreciate and like your thinking. Uh, unfortunately for us, though, the Assembly Bill specifically labels it as military equipment and required by law to address it as such. But I, but we will emphasize to your point that the purpose of it and that it it truly is not militaristic equipment that is that is used.
So if we made a motion to recommend that City Council approve a renewal of the AB four eighty-one public safety ordinance?
An ordinance, I believe it's twenty-three sixty-five.
Twenty-three sixty-five, is that acceptable, or do we need to specifically?
Yes, that would be acceptable.
Walter, is that that work? Okay. Yeah. So can we have a second to recommend public safety equipment per AB four eighty-one for renewal by City Council?
I I second that motion.
There we go. Uh, can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Munoz?
I support.
Commissioner Cervantes?
I am total agreement.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Vice Chair Watson?
Approved.
Chair Donnelly?
Approved. Okay, thank you, Chief. Um, so I want to note that Commissioner Cervantes has joined us and also Councilmember Caciari. And Michael, next up on our agenda is City Council Liaison.
Morning, Chair members. Uh, update, a couple of things. I've attended the San Gabriel Valley Council Government's Homeless Community Meeting last week, eight-thirty till ten fifteen at the COG offices in Monrovia. What was important is we we approved a contract for one point nine million dollars for a small, it's in Monobello, a tiny home interim housing site. Got approximately thirty units called Operation Stay Safe. And it was operated by Volunteers of America for the last year. We opened it up. The Council of Governments, which is thirty-plus cities, basically from Claremont up through South Pass, Monterey Park, all the way to La Caña, and we're part of it. And I sit in a homeless committee with about several other cities. We've opened up three of these interim housing projects, two in Baldwin Park, the one in Monobello by the Metrolink Station, kind of industrial area. In Baldwin Park, there's a twenty-five unit, individual unit, and they've got onsite, twenty-four seven security. Also in Baldwin Park, we opened up a thirteen unit, but fifteen individuals for families experiencing homelessness. The one we approved the other day, and I went through kind of the budget just to make sure it's not, you know, padded, was one point nine million dollars for the thirty individuals. They'll have onsite licensed clinical social workers, security. The chief was out there with me for that event. And Volunteers of America just said they couldn't handle it because, and also at the meeting, it was interesting, Monobello Fire Department showed up, about four or five individuals. They were handling a lot of the calls from the individuals in there who were going along the river and stuff. And Volunteers of America said, we don't have the capacity to handle all the issues with mental health and drug addiction, drug abuse. And the and the fire department was saying, we're just getting all these calls, and just our numbers have risen. We need some help onsite, which Volunteers of America doesn't have the capacity. They've handled a couple others in Pomona. So we've approved with Lakata, who's doing our mobile crisis van and outreach, LA Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse. They've taken over the contract. I kind of went through it. It provides, you know, three meals a day, services, twenty-four seven, you know, uh, navigation for housing, et cetera. So we're doing our share of Pasadena, South Pass in the region. We're really addressing this issue. But again, interim housing is supposed to be four or six months. Most of them are there for a year or so. Some are getting housing. But that next step in the continuum to get that permanent housing is very difficult. Good news, we received a call this week. I think the chief probably aware from Shannon and myself from Kenny, one of our, when we asked from one of our unhoused, he'd been here for about two years. He kind of hangs out with Albert and Wade, three gentlemen, kind of over fifty years old. Kenny was an attorney, got burnt out in Midwest, been here for two years. On the streets, just couldn't get housing. He's been trying. Finally got a call from him. He said he finally through the Union Station Housing Navigator, which we had a contract with, was able to obtain housing, and he's in housing now for about a week, right by Pasadena City College. Albert is close. Albert's got a, Albert's been close for six years. Albert's hopefully closer this time. You probably see Albert hangs out by Riot Aid all the time, big gentleman. He's been on here, our street, six, eight years. He's supposed to get a place in Eagle Rock. So he's very close, and are very, both are very thankful for all the residents of South Pass Fire Police Department for just helping him for these years on on the streets. Just couldn't thank enough. So I'll hopefully get out there with Shannon, get a picture with him in his in his new place. So one thing I did notice, and you probably have, and Chief I know knows, and both chiefs is, you know, as I walk the streets, I walk down the Royal every weekend. I just noticed a lot of new, there's always been new faces, but not as many new faces. So I'm not sure if LA is just kind of releasing them out. Towards, I see him getting off the train. I see him hanging out at the train, but it's 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 different groups that be a little younger and tougher than we used to have. And it's not the normal, you know, ten people we've seen and we know. It's kind of happening. It is, as I go through the San Gabriel Valley, my meetings, I've even I've seen a couple hanging out in front of the San Marino City Hall, just at the bus bench, like late at night sleeping there. So they're all over. So it's it's just, it's just a crisis. We're trying to manage it, but we're not able to manage it. So something's going to happen. We were talking at the meeting, the fact that the Measure H, the ten-year, you know, quarter cent sales tax, we started in two thousand seventeen, going to twenty twenty-seven. We're all in agreement that if the, if if it doesn't improve, people may not approve that next iteration when it comes up. So we're really concerned, and we're trying to get more money from the county to help us with our local stuff. Give you an example, some of the calls I got over this weekend are emails. I get a lot of emails, and the chief has seen some of these. And unfortunately, police had to respond. At the Garfield Park, there's a group that gets together morning and night, has dogs. Some are very controlled, have off-leash. Rolando sees them. And I guess there was an incident last week. I didn't see there was an out there, but apparently there's a couple irresponsible people, and I've seen it. So when my dog was alive, I'd walk her there and and that this big dogs would just run around the park, and, you know, my dog is great with people, but my dogs would come up, and I'm trying to hold them. And it was, it wasn't going to hurt it, but it was just jumping on my dog and other dogs. So apparently it jumped on a lady last week, and again, the irresponsible woman who brings this big dog, it doesn't hurt, but it scares people. Jumped on a lady, and she called the police. Police came out there. And so there, what do you, what are you going to do with the park? Put up a temporary fence? Don't let them do that. There's just stuff going on that unfortunately the police have to waste our time. But maybe something, if you have any thoughts on that, uh, let us know. It was another call we got, and I think, I think the chief were personally responding, and Sergeant Ronnie is, uh, we passed, you know, was in council, we passed several years ago, maybe more than ten. An ordinance banning smoking in multi-unit apartment buildings. We had people come testify that night, I remember, with a mom and her child, right over here on Fair Oaks. And they lived on the second floor, and a gentleman, a couple would go outside and smoke all day or in morning and night. And the smoke would go up, and a kid has having trouble breathing. And it was just, and so this is happening again. It's over here on Brent Park. And I know the lady, I was just at her house because she's having an issue with her landlord and and rent. So I was there last week, speaking to her and her boyfriend and her son, who also has asthma, a great kid, and some developmental disabilities. And again, there's a group that gets out there at night, loud music, and just starts smoking again and again. And, you know, I got an email like eleven thirty, twelve at night, and I'm, you know, and sent to Matt, who's off. So we said, if this happens, just call this number. The police will respond. And they they do, and you're not supposed to do that. So these are just some of the calls I get emails and the chief does over the weekend, sometimes at midnight on a, on a Saturday night. But happy to answer any questions you may have about anything.
When, I remember at one point we hired a new staff person that was going to be looking at housing for homelessness. Is that correct?
Yes, Leah, Leah's on our staff, looking at affordable housing. So whenever I get questions about housing, she's kind of helping us on our housing element and zoning. and looking for opportunities as we're required to do under the housing element in the state's regional housing needs assessment. State housing community development is a certain portion have to be low income, ultra-low income, certain categories. So we're actually be, we approved in on our council agenda, this property we own, the little theater over here on Mound and El Centro on the southeast corner. So that's currently being rented every month by the, by a group that, you know, performs there once in a while. But it's a month to month and expires very soon. So we're looking at developer coming in, you know, putting out requests for proposals and develop that into an affordable housing. You know, give us some ideas. There are the experts out there, whether it's wraparound services for people that need help, affordable housing, but we're required to do it. And that's a great site. We can build up and use the entire site.
And could you tell me what street is that?
You know, right over here, you just walk over about two hundred yards from here, El Centro and Mound.
Oh, El Centro.
You know, kind of by Mama's Brick Oven, right there. Yeah, that little theater, there's a little sign on it, parking lot gravel. Welcome. Rolando, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, I think the problem we're talking about housing is so almost impossible because the root of this, the root of this whole problem is people can work themselves to death and they cannot afford a house or a rent. They can have two or three jobs, low-paying jobs, and still not being able to afford a, 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 a housing. And for me, in this community that is fairly nice and all that, how come it is that our police force are, do not have housing to live in this community rather than having to drive from way, way out someplace because this place is too darn expensive. It should be that with the job, these folks, the, the community would benefit tremendously from having a police, people living with us in the community, as part of the community, as, as well as part of the apartment community. This is, to me, it just makes sense. It's something that needs to be done. But however, going back to what you're saying about this, you know, building a small places for these people to stay there for six months. The question is, after six months, if these people haven't got two or three jobs that will pay for a decent apartment or whatever, they'll be out on the street once again. So to me, it become, the way I look at it is LA has become a place where greed prevails. People are trying to make so much out of their real estate. They rather have it empty, like the cases in downtown. Half of those buildings are empty. But they don't let anybody leave their rent for a reasonable amount. And, you know, if you go to places like Sweden or Switzerland, they have built apartments for people to live there that can afford it. And we're not talking about in places that are surrounded by crime, but this is homes for people, hardworking people. And to me, that is the bottom of the whole problem. People are not getting paid enough for their work, number one. Number two, you're facing this mental crisis. The people have this mental issues that you, you don't know how to handle that. You have the best of intentions, but if any of those people approaches you and their mind is way out someplace else, they can harm you. And third is of course the problem with the drugs. But to me, the emphasis is in hardworking people that cannot afford a place to live with their families. That is to me, the basics, the basics, I think is, it should be almost in the constitution that we should be granted a safe place to live, to raise our families. And so I commend you trying to get something temporary, six months, a room or whatever. But that doesn't solve the problem. This whole problem is way, way bigger than that. And if you ask me how to solve it, I wouldn't know how to solve it. It's just I would try to tackle and see how these European countries without being much smaller, with much smaller budgets that we have, they can have it, they can take care of their people. However, we cannot. And that, to me, is the tragedy. It cannot be that a father with a wife and two kids cannot afford to feed them and give them a roof over their heads and have medical benefits to take them to increase to get sick. It is just, I, I have no word for it. To me is so, so overwhelming. And, you know, America at one time was great on that they were, we were taking care of people. But at this point, it seems that it's cara roja. I, and I don't know the answer.
Mr. Chair, can I just mention one thing? One of the item kind of addresses, Councilmember, Commissioner Cervantes comments. There was a presentation by the state's housing department. And they were comparing how people fall into homelessness. It was interesting, one of the, one of the categories they talked about, and I brought this up in my questions to the lady presenting. You're talking about those people, families, you know, family members that can't afford it. They're moved out of their family, bonded to the streets. And was talking about trying to provide support for these people to first get on the streets, give money to get some temporary housing. But one of the categories it had was the people getting out of jail, incarceration. And it was interesting, them along with other groups that fell into housing, it was just, they get and there's just no money available to try to help them out when they're first there. So it was interesting that out of every hundred people that get out of incarceration, maybe twenty percent are able to access some money for a program to help them for a couple of months. And otherwise, the other eighty percent, there's nothing. You're out and very few programs. And it was interesting. I said, that's interesting that when I look at the recidivism rate, it's like sixty-six, sixty-seven percent in California, it's almost identical. You put them out in the streets, you don't provide any assistance and within three years are rearrested and back in jail. So just initially, we're fine, because I remember a couple of times I'm sitting here at the courtyard and a person comes in, I just got out of jail and you can see in his arms, he's got all the tattoos. I'm looking for a place, where's the police, I want to make a phone call. There's another issue there that we're trying to manage. This problem is people are getting out of jail, people are falling into it. At the food bank today, we're getting a little less food and people are coming up just barely hanging on. Thanks.
Mr. Caciotti, when prior to any recommendation from the city council about this proposed location on Mound, will the city host public meetings for citizens and business owners? And maybe the police department and fire department as well to weigh in?
Yes.
On their concerns?
Yes, of course.
Before any recommendation is, is put through?
Yes.
Okay.
We just put it out there that we're looking, we're looking at the site and we're gonna put out a request for proposals, have a bunch of developers make presentations. Because we don't want to create like any more problems long-term by having, we're not looking for a halfway house for drug addicts, but families or individuals that hopefully, or seniors. Another, other programs we've done in like Claremont, they've produced affordable housing for seniors, veterans, things like that. Hopefully that's something we're looking at doing. Great point.
Yeah, and I think there's plenty of data that shows permanent supportive housing does not, if you work with great developers, does not create more homelessness or more housing insecurity can actually happen in the community to be growing. So it's gotta be interesting to see.
Yeah, we'll all have a part in it.
Chair Donnelly, Commissioner G has raised her hand on Zoom.
Yeah, I saw that. Councilmember Commissioner G is on Zoom and she's got her hand raised.
Yes, sir. Hi, I was listening to the report and I know that you had talked about how there wasn't enough bandwidth or capacity to address a lot of these concerns, whether they be homelessness or the dog jumping on somebody or the twelve midnight requests. Have we considered tapping into the resources offered by the social work schools? Maybe they have students that need internships or the public health students? Is that something that we could use to help improve our bandwidth?
So, so yes, Lakota, who we contract with now, again, we're the pilot project in the San Gabriel Valley that everybody else is looking at us, San Marino and our Arcadia, and they're only contracted for forty hours a week. And I can't remember the exact days, like Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, something like that. We're trying to get more hours, but they're the ones that, again, they just kind of respond, but it's kind of eight to six. We don't have enough money to go all the time. And we're all kind of trying to look at that model to refine it, to do more outreach. Because there's, as you see, there's more people on the streets. So I don't want somebody sitting in an office for two or three hours and then responding, you know, a couple of times a day. I want them out in the streets. So the police don't have to respond to those calls. Maybe they can prevent something from happening by outreach. So we're gonna get a little more time. We just found out the contract with the Measure H people at the county was approved. So we'll get a little more time with outreach in the community. So there's actually teams also going out outreach, not just waiting for crisis calls to happen. We're trying to, I'm trying, I know we're trying to push that model more outreach rather than just kind of sit there. And there are crisis calls coming in, just not as many as we anticipated. And we've talked to Lakota about getting students from the, you know, in behavioral health, whether it's licensed clinical social workers, marriage, family therapists, psychologists, caretakers, et cetera, to assist in it. That's, that's a great idea. We broached with them over the past year when we were starting this program and having meetings. So it's up to them to implement, but I'll bring it up again, especially when we do a tour.
The beauty of the students is that they don't cost anything and the only problem is liability. So I think that's, it's worth looking into, not just with LCSWs, but with public health and behavioral health students. And so many universities nearby, you know.
We agree a hundred percent. It'll be up to Lakota to, what their policy is to implement that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the council member? No, thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's move right to staff liaison communications.
Morning, Commissioner. Just two quick updates. As always, I'd like to give you an update on our staffing. Since last meeting, we have brought on one more firefighter, paramedic. I think I briefed you last meeting that he was in position. We were just waiting for him to pass one of his last exams. He did that. So he's been onboarded. He's currently working shifts now, so working out well. So we currently have two vacancies and hoping by the end of the year, we'll have our promotional exams done and the vacancies and new recruitment done and hopefully be fully staffed starting twenty twenty-four. I couldn't remember if I briefed this commission or not. Two months ago, we did receive a clean audit from LA County Department of Health Services for our paramedic program. We go through an annual audit every year through, actually, it's, it's LA County EMSA, the Emergency Medical Services Agency. They oversee the paramedics in LA County. It's a very comprehensive audit. They come in, they look at all of our certifications for our paramedics, they look at our controlled narcotics, make sure that we are keeping our logs and just the whole program. So we again received a clean audit. And this is the seventh straight year that we've also received the gold standard award for our cardiac care. That's, that's, that's a standard that every department at LA County should strive for. And that is basically our medics are pretty much a hundred percent on recognizing very critical cardiac emergencies in the field, properly treating them and then transporting them to the, to the, to the receiving hospitals that can take a patient like that. If you haven't heard the term, we call it a STEMI. It's kind of a big term, but it's, it's someone who's having a heart attack who needs immediate attention in a cath lab. And, and that's where that gold standard award comes from. So that's another nice recognition for our paramedics again this year. So that's all I have. Brief update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Questions for the chief? Nope, thank you.
Good morning again. A couple of brief updates. I'll follow on Chief Riddle's heels. Staffing continues to be an issue for the police department. We are at minimum staffing on every shift. So we're putting out extra patrol cars to address the, the homeless and the mental health issues. Also the, the crime trends that are occurring in South Pasadena, those are, those are filled by overtime shifts. We're also doing traffic details, which are filled by overtime shifts, but as time goes on, we're trying to recruit. But so are all the other law enforcement agencies. So those vacancies that we have and the, the needs to fill the, the patrol requirements and the specialized details, we are filling with overtime right now. So as I said, as, as we move forward, we're hoping to see some relief. After the first of the year, we have a couple of people in the background process. They will need to go to the police academy and then six months there and then field training. So like I said, hopefully after the first of the year, we'll see some relief in that. Having said that, I do want to bring up that on October second is the Police Department Community meeting for the Police Department's assessment. That'll be here at six thirty PM in the city council chambers or available via Zoom for anybody that's interested. I encourage everyone to attend. It's an opportunity to not only hear about what the assessment's looking like, but also to voice any concerns or thoughts on what your police department should look like as we move forward. And remember, this assessment's really looking at the police department in a very holistic manner in terms of not just what the police department looks like today, but what do we want it to look like in the next ten years? What, what do we anticipate for staffing, efficiency, technology? And then of course, our policies and procedures on, on how we handle things. So I encourage everyone to, to attend for that. And then lastly, I mentioned briefly about the overtime. As Councilmember Caciotti said regarding the mental health and homeless issues, you know, South Pasadena is not immune and we're certainly seeing a lot of it, especially on our borders to the west in the city of Los Angeles. There's an article in the newspaper today, The South Pasadena, that, that addresses that. You know, I think South Pasadena is doing a, a, a great job for, for the, the tools and what we have. But as the council member said, we're seeing a lot of people that are new faces to South Pasadena. And, and the people that we're coming into contact with, not only are they new to South Pasadena, but I think we're seeing more and more that are new to the state. And it seems to be a new trend that's, that's, I don't even want to call it a new trend, but new to South Pasadena to where we're just seeing this influx of people that are coming through that for whatever reason, they're coming to South Pasadena, they're staying and, and we're getting a lot of calls on them from the police department. And I think the community is a little concerned. I've been hearing some thoughts about, you know, what can the police department do? And, and how can we address these issues? And it's such a, to Commissioner Cervantes' point, it's such a complex issue. I don't think the police department itself can, certainly we can't come up with a solution. I think it, it's really a community-based solution on how we can address this and resources and, and and, and housing is, is the first element. Everyone we're coming across has either got addiction or mental health issues. So it's, it's quite a robust problem that we need to, we need to figure out how to solve as a community. But the police department's working on it. We're working with our, our mental health providers. We're staffing as, as best as we can to address these issues. But in, in some ways, our, our hands are also tied with, there's a case law, Martin B. Boise, which is really the, the, the golden rule for, for dealing with homelessness. And it has to deal with the camping ordinances and cities are very, they're handicapped in what we can and cannot do without emergency shelters. And of course, emergency shelters is the biggest issue, right? It's housing. And that takes resources and space and money and personnel and, and that's, that's the big issue. But if anybody has any questions on that, we're, we're happy to, to answer any of those. We're working with a lot of our regional partners, but it, it just seems like the, the problem keeps magnifying itself. So you know, we're, we're moving forward, but, but it is a long-term process. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question regarding there be a public a, a public, a public discussion around the assessment. I was hoping that it would also have, we would have an opportunity to discuss it here also. And review the assessment and your recommendations. Would that be possible?
So we'll bring the, when the recommendations come in, remember this is still part of the community outreach part of it. So once, once we have this next meeting on October second, they'll put together the Raftellus, which is the company that's doing the assessment, they'll put together a, a final report. That report could come here to the Public Safety Commission, then ultimately to the, the city council for review.
Oh, so the October second is just for more input?
Correct.
The community for the assessment. The community for the assessment, like we had a public meeting here.
Right.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Communications, Walter, do you have anything this morning? Okay. Okay.
No, nothing to report at this time.
Yeah. Um, I'd just like to thank both chiefs and the city staff for the nine eleven, uh, remembrance this morning. It's been twenty-two incredibly short years, uh, but very important that we recognize those who lost their lives that day. It was nice to see everyone there. Um, Walter, I'm gonna throw it back to you and see.
No, I just want to thank, uh, the, the, our police department. I think you are bombarded with so many issues. You are short-staffed. The traffic does not get any better. People drive like savages. They think they, they all act like they have to be there someplace within the next two seconds. And, uh, and then you're getting calls about dogs and things like that, which people take it so close to their hearts. They make, they become your enemies if you say something to them. And it's like, I don't think that you should be exposed to that kind of issue. That's not what the police is about. And, uh, but I, I am very thankful that you are there and that you do a very good job.
Great, anything else? All right, in that case, it is nine twenty-five, meeting adjourned.